And take their seats as I call out their name. John Artisome, Bill Mathias, Mark Dodd, Stephanie Luke, Jamie Hanyek, and Peter Monk. And I really want to thank all eight of them for being here tonight. Now, none of the candidates have been told what the questions are. So they, I thought that that would be the best way. If it provides genuine answers, it really would demonstrate the knowledge that the candidates have on a particular subject. And I think it's better for them to answer off the cuff than having prepared canned comments. So if nobody knows what the questions are. I'm going to try to get to as many of the audience questions as we can tonight. With eight candidates, you know, we have to limit their times or else we won't get to very many questions. So also what we're going to do is we're going to start each new question with a new person. So John will answer the first question. Bill will start with the second question. Mark will start with the third question. That way it's always rotating and nobody is always first or always last. Because if you're the last one, you get the benefit of knowing what everybody else said. So we want to keep that fair too. Now, our, now did you have the 20 and the 10?
20 and 10.
Okay. Our highly trained timekeeper Carol is going to keep track of time and she's going to let you know when you have 20 seconds left and 10 seconds left. She'll hold up signs and then when your time is up. And I don't think I'd like to get hit with that meat cleaver that he has if you go over the timer. Okay, now what we're going to do, because there are eight of you, is we're going to start with a two-minute opening statement. Each question we're only going to have one minute to answer. And then we'll have one-minute closing statement. Now, I'd like for you to include in your opening comments why you're interested in politics in general and the Lake County School Board race in particular. And so with that, we'll start with John, with your opening statement.
Thank you. I'm a candidate for Lake County School Board District One.
Yes, I meant to tell you, please everybody stand up when it's your turn to speak so the people in the back can see you and hear you. And we have microphones on the table.
I have a very diverse resume, including law enforcement, business. I've worked in real estate, the hospitality industry, and the sales and marketing. Since moving to Lake County from Orlando in 2008 up until January of this year, I worked as a substitute teacher for the Lake County schools. I've worked over 600 days in 21 of our schools and had teaching assignments in every grade from kindergarten to 12. I truly understand the day-to-day operations of our schools. And I can understand and relate to the trials and tribulations of our school teachers. I have an extensive business background and I have the practical knowledge to make the cost-effective decisions to ensure a quality education for our children. I got involved in politics, as old as I am, this is my first round of politics. I got involved because I think we can do better and I think the Lake County School Board can do better. And I think we, the School Board, the teachers, and all of us together, can do better for each other. Thank you.
Yes? Yes. I'm Bill Mathias. I'm the incumbent in District One for Lake County School Board. I'd like to take a minute and first recognize behind every good School Board member is a spouse. And I recognize Mindy in the back. And she has my brochures and signs. For half a minute, I want you to think of the School Board as a business and you're all stakeholders. We have a $538 million budget. We employ more people. We use more resources than any other business in Lake County. And it's made up of a board of directors like any other business and it's called your Lake County School. I represent District One and there are five districts. Our main purpose to be on the Board is for our advocacy, our accountability, and to really create the vision where we want to see our school district go. Why am I qualified to be on the Board? I started my company 32 years ago. I bring a very precise business perspective to the Board. I have a master's degree in organizational management and I am a veteran of the United States Army. Thank you. So I would ask for your consideration on August the 26th. I want to continue the work that we've started together. Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mark Dodd and I'm running in District Three. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Grassley Lake Elementary, but my career didn't start in education. Prior, I spent about 10 years in the business world, most of that time as a manager and park operation for the Walt Disney Company. I made the move mostly inspired by my own daughter Addison when she was in kindergarten. One of the things that I looked forward to most every day was coming home and working with her on her homework. Every time I saw that light bulb turn on above her head and being part of that process, watching her love of learning grow and blossom, I was inspired and I said, "I want to do this for other students." So there it was, on Halloween Day, I stepped into the classroom for the very first time. Some wondered if I'd come back on November 1st after all those sugar-dipped kids, but I really haven't looked back since. See, along the way, I've had the chance to work alongside some incredibly talented and dedicated people. Teachers who have been teaching for decades and some that were fairly new, just like me. And while I originally set out to touch the lives of the students, exactly the opposite happened. They had touched my life, which is why I stand here tonight, fighting for them and for their education. See, I would provide a unique perspective to the School Board with that blend of previous business and actual classroom experience. I know that the problems are real in the classroom and I know what they are because I face them on a daily basis. I know how many barriers there are for teachers to provide the chance for students to make the learning gains that we are expecting of them. I have suffered through the technology gap, where you've got a computer that overheats and shuts down in the middle of lessons, where you're expected to be innovative in your use of technology. It's part of our evaluation. I've also been there with students that exceed the class size amendment because the district was too slow in providing another allocation for teachers that you need so you can give them the individual attention they deserve. Ladies and gentlemen, I'll share many more stories tonight, but I'm afraid my time is limited now. So I look forward to sharing this with you tonight. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jamie Hanyek. Can everyone hear me?
No, there's microphone there.
Hello, is it on? Hello, my name is Jamie Hanyek. Sorry, I don't project as well as the men. I was born and raised in New York. I went, my father tried to push me into banking, so I did do banking for eight years. I decided I didn't like it after eight years. I didn't like to be a cog in the corporate machine. I really enjoyed working with children. So after eight years in banking, I decided to go into childcare. I've been a nanny for the past 12 years and I very much enjoyed seeing the little spark in their eyes when they learn how to read or do a puzzle for the first time. I know it doesn't make, obviously, my father's very upset, I don't make as much money, but I care about the children, they care about me, and that's what matters to me in my heart. When I moved to Lake County in 2004, I started volunteering right away because I know the volunteers are the heart of the community. They know where it's at, they know what's going on, they can tell you this about where to get connected to the right people. I thought I was going to use it for networking. It led to a job after job, yes, job referrals came, but I met so many wonderful people that volunteered in the schools. The Kiwanis Clubs, the Rotary, the Women's Club. American Cancer Society had the Relay for Life on all the fields in the high schools. And I want to continue to serve, I want to use all my energies that I've learned over the years in business and in childcare and focus them all on one goal, and that's to make Lake County schools the best they can be for the next generation. I want to know when the children get to Lake County schools, the schools will be ready to provide them the best education so they can be the future leaders. And that's all I am.
Good evening, thank you for coming out. My name's Todd Howard and I'm incumbent for District Three. You know, he added in a little twist, so I'm going to touch on that at the beginning because it really is why I got involved in politics. We attended the march in Washington DC, the 9/12 March, and one of the speakers there said, "If good men and women don't get involved in local politics, you have no reason to complain." And at that point, we were having some problems with our school and with my own stepson. And, you know, I came back home and I looked around and I sat down with my wife Ginger, who's here today, and our stepson, and I said, "You know, this isn't going to get any better. You know, we're looking around at an economy that was crashing around us." And, you know, I finally had time to pick my head up and say, "How did we get here?" And I decided at that point that I was going to get involved in whatever way I could. It just so happened that my interest was in the School Board. I've got a bachelor's degree in nutrition, a doctorate in chiropractic, I'm a Lake County native, so I've been through the Lake County school system. My mom was a third-year teacher and veteran right here. So I had stakeholder in this county and in this system. So I chose to run for School Board and I did. And like many of the folks, I didn't exactly know what I signed up for. You learn very quickly. The primary focus of the School Board is the business side. We do budgets and policy. We do budgets for 6,000 employees, for 7 million square feet of building space. We have a tremendous job and we run the operations side, but that is primarily what we do. We also get to advocate, we also get to bring things in for our schools. But that is the rewarding part for us. The reason I continue at this is we have a strangling debt. We're not going to be out of debt until 2031. We need folks who are business-minded and fiscally responsible, and that's what I bring to this Board.
Okay. I was a teacher. I'm currently, I was a teacher in elementary school, but I think I'm projecting okay. Should I use the microphone or are you guys okay? We're okay, okay. I am Stephanie Luke. I am candidate for District Five School Board and I'll also start by telling you guys why I decided to run for School Board. I have dedicated my entire career to education. I graduated from Tavares High School. I did my seventh grade dance in this very building. So whenever I'm in the Hockstal Civic Center, I always kick back to days of vanilla ice and dancing. So excuse me if I don't like that. Anyway, graduated from Tavares. I started in the classroom in 2000 at Girlland Elementary School and I've also worked at Eustace Heights and at Spring Creek. I have, I'm now at the University of Central Florida, teaching for their College of Education, and I supervise and coordinate internships in Lake and Sumter County as well. So my hand has been in education at the classroom level and at the district level and at the state level. I've had lots of opportunities to talk to stakeholders at different levels in that position that I've held, or in all of those positions that I've held. And the reason I ran for School Board is because, as Todd mentioned, we do a lot of the overseeing of the operational management of a school system, but we approve those budgets as they come in. We don't necessarily put them together. And one thing that I can look at when we bring in our school budget, when we're talking about Eustace Heights for instance, is that when we start to talk about building, bringing in classroom technology or smart boards for every classroom and it's a $400 million, million-dollar price tag, I know what we already have in our buildings, I know that we need teacher training for that that probably won't happen, and that lots of teachers won't feel comfortable using that technology unless things are behind them. So the educator's perspective is one that needs to be on this Board that is missing. So it does bring a balanced position to a Board that's filled with business leaders and it will help benefit our students, which is what every decision that I have made in my career has been at the heart of, is what's best for our children. I want to make our school district an A district. I have high goals for our school district because I know that we live in a district where we can make that happen. And I appreciate you guys having us here tonight so that you can hear why. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to use this, I've been speaking all day, so I think I need just a little bit of help tonight. My name is Nancy Montsman and I'm currently the Director of Business Incubator Programs and the Business Opportunity Center at Lake Sumter State College. I'm running for Lake County School Board because I believe that all of our students deserve the best education that we can afford. I believe that we need to empower our teachers to do the jobs for which they've been trained. And I think that we, as the School Board, have the responsibility to make sure that they have the tools and the resources they need to do the job. In short, I think we need to create a classroom environment where teachers can teach and students can learn. So I say to myself, "How can the School Board do that and stay within the limits of their responsibilities?" In a recent study that was done of the decisions and issues that faced the School Board over the last four years, it was determined that 60% of the issues and decisions that are made by the School Board are financial. 30% of them are in operations and 10% relate to curriculum and education. By setting clear policy, by being fiscally responsible, and holding people accountable for poor choices or poor decisions, the School Board actually can change the culture in our district and we can create a classroom environment that's conducive to learning. During the last seven months, I have been going to the School Board meetings to understand what the current issues are, understanding what decisions are being made. And I've also been active in our Lake County K-12 classes, Lake Tech, and Lake Sumter because I do believe it's important, even if you're a business, you must stay connected to what's happening in our educational field. I have a master's degree in education and I have extensive business experience at Red Lobster, Tupperware, and I have my own business for 20 years, so I am very capable of doing budget analysis, strategic planning, and I think I have the qualifications that's needed for a School Board member. Thank you.
My name is Peter Target. Most of the time, they say the best to last, so here I am. The reason I'm in politics is I'm a current city councilman in the city of Umatilla for the past six years. I understand the responsibilities it takes to be an elected official. You don't always have it easy when you have a large crowd who disagree with some of your decisions that you're going to make. Last night, I had a kind of contentious meeting in Umatilla. But we have personal feelings, things that we want to have accomplished, and you have to be able to stand your ground and speak your piece. I've done that for the past six years in Umatilla. We've had a lot of things that have gotten accomplished in our town and we're moving forward. The reason I got involved in this race is I'm also married to a school teacher, an ESE teacher. Those are the kids that are kind of pushed aside. With the new systems that Florida's coming into, you have to be able to go to Tallahassee for six years. I've been going up to Lake County Days, talking to all of our elected officials. I know all of them personally. I know the Board of County Commissioners personally. I know what it takes to be a negotiator. And in order to get anything done on a Board of more than two, you have to have two others who agree with what your decision should be. A lot of times, you can come in with the greatest ideas in the world, but unless you can get others to agree with what you think is the right way to move, nothing gets accomplished. Our teachers need to have a voice, our parents need to have a voice. We need to figure out ways to get our parents more involved in our educational system. My wife has 35 children in her class. She has two parents show up preparing tonight. That's a shame. And that's not only happening in my wife's class, it's happening in all the classes. So we have to figure out a way to get our parents more involved, be a voice for our students and our staff throughout the county. Thank you.
Okay, so are we ready for the lightning round now? Like I say, I kept all the questions confidential and quiet and in the way here, so. Okay. And we'll start with John and then we'll start rotating. All right, the first question is, and some of you may have already kind of touched on it, but what do you consider to be the main purpose of the elected School Board? And if you are an incumbent, what have been your most significant accomplishments while on the School Board? And if you are a challenger, what are the goals you intend to accomplish? And we'll start with John.
I think the primary response is fiscal responsibility and good management. One thing the Lake County School Board currently does is site management. I like to think, which I said to the home builders yesterday, they were talking about an oversight on construction. You give somebody the hammer, you got to give them the nails. I'm okay with that. But we need a standard operating procedure, policies and procedures that are consistent for every school. We have certain schools that use one grade system, another school with another grade system. We have certain schools with one dress code, another school with another dress code. It has to be uniform. Thank you.
What do you consider to be the main purpose of the elected School Board? And if you are an incumbent, what have been your most significant accomplishments while serving on the School Board?
The most important job that we have is the budget. We have a $538 million budget last year. We're in the budget, we're in the budget process right now. The most relevant, I think, accomplishment has been to change the culture of the Board. They brought to us earlier in the year $993 million worth of needs. We went back and asked the Board to use a sustainability model and also a pay-as-you-go. And provided that we get fully funded growth that is coming to South Lake, we can pay for all of our capital needs by 2031, all of our capital needs will be met. We reduced it from $993 to $700 million and we will have $19 million in the bank on that day in 2031. Thank you.
Can you hold on just a second? Is there a car blocking the road?
I apologize, gentlemen, ladies. Car on Caroline Street, is that one of somebody? Let's see, get you a move first, sir. Sorry. Thank you, officer.
Third, August 26th.
The main purpose of the Lake County School Board should be to support the atmosphere that is needed in order for students to make the best learning gains possible. They do that through a variety of vehicles. One is the budget and the other is through setting policy and direction. They do that through holding people accountable and setting clear expectations. Frankly, I think that we have a long way to go in all of those areas. So as a new Board member, my priority would be to speak up about the challenges the teachers are facing. And hopefully, we will be able to change the course of the decisions that were made so that way we can then support the students' learning so that way they can make the most gains possible. The teachers will enjoy being able to have those gains being made in the classrooms and I think it's going to be a very inclusive environment.
I believe that a School Board member should work on policy and also the budget. It's important that they come with no set agendas to the School Board, that they're only there to represent the voters and the children of Lake County, that they're not told there's some third rail they can't touch, we can't raise taxes, we can't do this, we can't do that. I don't have any of those concerns. I have no one backing me. I'm Jamie campaigning for the first time in my life and I only care about the Lake County schoolchildren and the parents that would elect me to be on the School Board. So that's the policies that I would follow, is what the parents want and the voters want.
The main purpose of us being on School Board, for me, is fiscal restraint. What we've done, you know, I think probably our greatest accomplishment is in the process of having to cut $80 million out of our budget, we were also able to save the taxpayers more than $10 million just in interest through reworking of the debt and also early payoff of the sales tax. So while we're cutting budgets, we're also being fiscally responsible. You know, one of the, for me personally, you know, that's just part of the job, but the advocacy side for me personally is the partnerships we create. And recently, we created a partnership with UCF, Lake Sumter State College, the South Lake Hospital, Lake County Schools, and others. And we're going to bring a high-performing program into the schools that is going to allow these students to succeed and it's good for the students, the community, and for business. And so those are great accomplishments.
Again, you guys get to kind of hear the same answers as we get down here, but the main goal, again, the main purpose of a School Board is to set those policies that are clear and expectations are direct and accountability is there for all and to manage the budget and support the budget. So I'm definitely in support of the pay-as-you-go and I would like to continue that because we cannot have a repeat of what has happened in the past for this school district financially. And I also agree that we have to look at the policies, some of the current policies that we have in place, and we have to consider those policies when we're discussing accountability among leaders at our school and leaders at our district level. And that's something that the School Board needs to take very seriously in the coming years. So thank you.
Again, I agree with the policies and procedures and with the budget, but I would like to add another element to that. I believe it's incumbent upon us, because it's impossible to know the answers to every question that is posed to us, to facilitate partnerships between the business community and the education community and to make sure that all of our teachers and our principals have a true seat at the table when we're making decisions. It's impossible to know what's happening in the classroom and make decisions up here unless we ask people to come, give us input, and we listen. I have employees, so I know that you can't listen to everything your employee wants you to do. But I also know that when you're going to make changes and you're going to make decisions, if you bring those employees, if you bring your teachers and your principals to the table and they have a chance to have some input, they're more likely to buy into that and do a better job. So in addition to budget and policies and procedures and accountability, facilitating partnerships and giving people true seats at the table to make a difference is what I see the Board should do.
The main purpose of the School Board is to make sure that our children get educated. Teachers are the best educators we have. We have to let them loose. In Tallahassee, they keep bringing down FCAT, Common Core, Florida Standards, this, that. Teachers go to school and get a degree to teach. If you give them the opportunity to teach, our children will learn. Most of our children don't know how to balance a checkbook, don't know what compound interest is. Those are the kinds of things we need to make sure. We have to get back to a vocational education. Years ago, we used to have some great vocational education. The School Board has to start talking about that again. The other thing is we have to make sure we have the right people in the right places. If our superintendent is not getting us where we want to go, maybe it's time for a new superintendent. We have, the pyramid has gone from this structure to this structure. We're getting too top-heavy. We need more money in the classrooms for our students.
All right. Now, by the way, that was an audience question as well, which was, what do you think is the role of a School Board member? So that did take care of one of the audience questions also. Okay. This next question, we also have two audience questions on the same topic. So we'll start with Bill this time. He's already ready. Do you support Common Core education standards, now known as next-generation Sunshine State standards? And if not, what have you personally done to modify or alter school plans for Common Core implementation?
I happen to be in favor of the rigor that Common Core was to bring. The issue mainly for me has been the federal government's oversight and involvement and in the assessment component. That's where the... That's where the rubber leaves the road. In August of 2013, the Governor Scott, he suspended the park assessment component. Recently, and they went through a whole generation of public input and rewriting, and Common Core went away. We pulled away from Common Core, and what was, what came from that is what's called the Florida Sunshine State standards, which is basically lipstick on the pit, quite honestly. So what we have to look at is, we have to look at the rigor. You have to be comfortable that this board is competent enough, or competent enough, that we're looking at the... We are looking at stuff.
When I first started teaching, we were under the old standards, and I thought some of the flaws in them was that there was not enough rigor. So at first, I was excited about the idea of more rigorous standards coming down. Unfortunately, what resulted was not quite what I expected from the classroom perspective. I found that teachers had very little involvement in the process, and as a result, we were left with a bunch of standards that were not developmentally appropriate, or required the student to solve a problem using a specific method. Even though they might arrive at the right answer, still be marked wrong because they didn't use the right method. That's not how we all think in this room, that's not how we should be training the students to think. Where I had the biggest challenge, though, was the district's support of Common Core, because they didn't give us the resources we needed in the classroom. Common Core has been in place in kindergarten for three years now, and we still don't have a map with a line to the standards. The state doesn't test specifically in kindergarten, so the district picked a test. They picked a test that's not even aligned to the Common Core standards that I'm required to teach.
Common Core standards are coming down from the federal government, and they want to have uniform standards across all 50 states. That's to help the children in Lake County compete with children in California, compete with children in New York, compete with children in Mississippi, and so on. When Governor Bush was our governor, he met with other governors at the governors' conferences, and he's since formed his own foundation for children's education, and he supported the Common Core standards then. I don't believe we should turn around and say they're bad now, I just think they need to be modified. They still need to have standards all across the states. A child coming from out of state needs to be on the same page with a child in Florida. Teachers need to have their book at the same page, on the same chapter, you know, colonial or seminal war. And the child, it's just to help the children. It's to help the children be less confused when they move from another state. Florida has, you know, people moving here all the time, and they need to, we need to have uniform standards. Thank you.
Common Core has swept in with Race to the Top, which was just another topic of federal government continuation of the No Child Left Behind. It wasn't something that I supported in 2009, it's not something I support now. Common Core ends up to be basically a sellout to big business. ARR has now got our testing arm, and for me, that's the most important part, is to bring our testing back under local control. I'm already working with some of the legislators on doing just that. You know, it's a process that we have to work through, but there's not a quick answer. The problem with the books and many of these other things is, we haven't even seen the test yet. We don't know what the test is going to look like, and the teachers don't even know how they're going to be tested on it, or how they're going to be assessed on a test that we haven't seen. It's a big mess, and I'm here to tell you that in the next three years, it's going to get worse. This is going to be an abject train wreck.
Talk back. She's had a race to the top, she's done a great job.
I was at the Race to the Top Committee whenever all of this came down, and that was one of my biggest concerns as it came down, was we just had a standard shift in 2007 that we had purchased new textbooks for, and then in 2010, we shifted the standards again. So that was my biggest opposition, is that we were switching standards again. And so how can we get consistency and impact on our student achievement when the standards continue to shift? I agree with what most of these people have said in regards to the assessment being a huge piece of concern. What I've done to kind of help with this, our teachers haven't been prepared properly to implement standards that are going to be tested on, this rigorous test that we don't even know what it's going to be. I've been working with our local schools to try to dissect some of the sample problems that we've been given for the assessment, so that our students can be more prepared, what can be somewhat prepared for a test that we're going to take that we know nothing about at this point. And I agree wholeheartedly with Dr. Howard that it is a big train wreck, and it's the atmosphere of it, and that's why it's important to have somebody that's aware of what's legislatively mandated and what's not, and what we can control at this level and what we cannot. And that's something that I can bring to the table.
I find it interesting that it's called Common Core when none of our children come to school from common families, from common backgrounds, common readiness skills. There's not much common about the way our children come to school, and all of our children deserve an opportunity to learn. And I'm in favor of standards and I'm in favor of rigor, because we want our students to achieve. But what scares me the most about it is the process that we're teaching children in math and some of the other things, because when we are teaching our children a different way to do math or a different way to do things, and they go home and their parents cannot help them, we are separating our parents from our students. We are clamoring to have our families and our parents involved in our children's education, and when we are teaching our children a different process and a different method, which our parents know nothing about, they are robbed of the opportunity to help those children, and we are not being responsible to give them all the help that they need. So let's not separate our parents from our students.
You can't put everybody, every student, into the same shoebox. People who lose in Common Core, Florida Standards, and all these other tests, they get stressed, the teachers get stressed, you get tested 10 times a week. My wife comes home and tells me, "I'm losing the ones on the bottom, and we're losing the ones on the top. The kids on the bottom need a little more time, we can't give it to them. The kids on the top are ready to fly with their wings wide up, and we can't let them." So we have to get to our legislators, like Dr. Howard said, they're the ones who are making a lot of the choices for us. We have to be able to talk straight with them and let them know what are our values, what are our kids' values, what values does our state have? And when somebody comes in, we'll hope they'll be with us. If they haven't been taught the same way we've been taught, we'll catch them up. We've had the opportunity to do that for all of our lives.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to go with an audience question. Oh, I'm sorry? I violated my own rotation.
Common Core is not a federal mandate, it's a state mandate. Forty-four states signed into it. And as Mr. Mathias says, we have redesigned it to be Florida standards. Common Core was developed by technology and marketing people, and it was market-driven. There was not one early childhood development specialist in the room, and too few teachers. We need more common sense and less Common Core. There's one very important paragraph in Common Core. It says, "We are telling you what the curriculum has to be, not how you have to teach it, but what you teach it with." That's what Lake County has to do, develop our way to teach our children. Thank you.
Sorry about that, John. Okay, now, we'll start with Mark with an audience question. Do you support a parent's right to opt out of standardized testing, and will you assist your constituents if they have any pushback from the district?
You know, I can certainly provide a unique perspective on this question. As a parent of a kindergartner this past year, as a teacher, I gave out 14 weeks of testing mandated by either the district or the state in my kindergarten classroom last year. That is just way too much instructional time that we've lost. Some of the most valuable time that a teacher spends with a kid is one-on-one or in small groups where they can target a specific student's weakness. I think that if there are not people like parents to be able to hold the school board and our legislators accountable and have an opt-out method such as that, then the entire process is counter to what the principles that this country was founded upon. So I do support it.
As I stated before, when a school board member, I will listen to the parents and the teachers and the children and the voters. And if the parents do come to me, or they do come to the school board, and they say they want their child to be opted out of the Common Core testing, I would approve of that. It's a parent's decision. I'm not for a big federal government telling the parents how to raise their children, or what things they don't want their children tested on. Thank you.
Would I support opt-out of all standardized testing? Absolutely not. There has to be accountability, and there's nothing wrong with accountability, and we should all be held accountable. But do I think there's too much testing? Absolutely. Do I think people should have the right to go into another form of that accountability? Absolutely. But to just give a blanket, "We're not going to test the student because I don't want to," I don't think that's fair to the taxpayers, I don't think that's fair to the teachers, and I don't think it's fair to the community.
I would agree with what Dr. Howard said as well, that we do test too much in the schools, that there is way too much time that's taken away from our instruction and our time on task due to assessments, and some of the, most of the buildings don't have the technology that would allow them to test faster, so it's taken over a number of days, and the teacher's time is taken up that way. And that is a huge concern as a parent. Again, I have a kindergartner that came home and told me that she'd been testing like three weeks in a row. "What'd you do today?" "Took test." "What'd you do today?" And it's very disconcerting. But I also have a huge, a huge concern of the people that would be opting out of their students taking standardized tests, and as much as I would like to think that it would be concerned people, I would worry that it would be just somebody that didn't want their student to take a test, and we do have to have accountability. I do have to have a way to communicate with a parent about how their child is doing, and we do have to be able to measure that growth over the course of the school year. The other, the other thing I want to mention is, this is just another piece where an educator's perspective would be hugely helpful when making a decision.
I look at this pretty much the way Dr. Howard did and Stephanie looked here. I believe that we test too much, but I believe that we need to work at getting the proper testing so that we can measure achievement for our students. But as soon as we let people opt out of testing, then we're going to opt out of coming to school on Friday, we're going to opt out of something else. We have to have some standards, we have to have some policies and procedures that we know how to administer and adhere to. The minute we have options and alternatives, it becomes very difficult for our principals and teachers to administer those things with any consistency. So I believe that testing too much, I believe that we need to work on testing, but I'm not necessarily sure that I would let people opt out of the testing process.
So now I'm the last one, and I have to agree with that. But if a parent has a specific purpose or a specific reason that that test, they wanted their child to opt out, it's just like certain books have things in that parents don't want their children to read. So you have to be flexible. School system has to be as flexible as possible. You can't let everybody, you know, get out of the test, because I know as a substitute teacher, and my wife as a teacher, she would never be able to give a test if you let them opt out. They'd all be opting out. So you have to have tests, you have to be able to see how the kids are doing and progressing or not progressing, so that you can, you know, fix the next test, and, you know, opting out is something that would definitely have to be specific in nature.
Keep rotating.
Testing, I, maybe I'm wrong here, but I think people have the right, which I would not advocate or like to see, they have the right to opt out of Common Core. They don't have the right to opt out of all testing in the room. But again, I think there's, I advocate 20% of a teacher's time to be discretionary teaching. My son tells me, he's a fifth-grade teacher, every teacher in fifth grade has to be on the same page every day, teaching the same thing. You cannot do that and have no child left behind. You need to let the teachers teach to the students and not to the test. Thank you.
I don't support the opting out. I think that you've got to have that measure, and I think it would create chaos within the district. If you're a, if you're a student within our school district, then you've got to play by the rules and take the test. I will say this, though. We are on accountability overload, and the high-stake testing is just too much. If a teacher gets three unsatisfactory reviews, half of it based on what was the FCAT, half of it based on the administrator's review, they can't teach for life in the state of Florida. Pretty high stake. In the world that I came from, they used the ITBS, Iowa Test of Basic Skills. It was done at the beginning of the school year, it was used to assess the student, and then you would know what to build on. To do it at the end of the year is ridiculous to me.
Some candidates work for the Lake County School District or other government agencies that interfere, or, excuse me, interface with the Lake County School District. Please describe who you work for, whether you will keep working, and how your employer is not affected by any board decision you might make. Why would voters believe you are acting in their children's interest and not that of unions, staff, or your employer?
Well, that's an easy one for me. Self-employed, I work for families that hire me to watch their children in the home. I don't have any ties to any businesses, I pay my own insurance, I pay my own bills, I don't collect union, I don't pay union dues, I don't have any political backing at all, really. It's just, like I said, my campaign is pretty much just me, listening to the public, and going out there and trying to do my part in the world to do some service for children. That's all I care about, and that's all I'll be doing on the school board.
My wife owns a very large cleaning service, and we used to do a lot of new construction cleaning and many other things. When I took this job, we couldn't do that anymore. It's not a conflict of interest from a legal standpoint, but for me, it was. Any votes I made did not affect anybody in my family, and it has no direct impact on me, and as a matter of fact, we've changed to pull that money away from my family. And so that is, you know, we try to remain on the right side of this and have, have no indication of any adverse decisions that would come back on me.
I work for the University of Central Florida, and I do consulting across the United States with standards and curriculum instruction and development. And I do some consulting work with Lake County Schools, and after, after the election, if I am elected, I would not do consulting in Lake County anymore for our school districts, for our schools in Lake County. Other than that, the University of Central Florida doesn't have a conflict in working with the schools. So I think that that, that kind of, there's no hidden agenda, it's just that I've dedicated my career to education, and I'd like to further that through the school board.
I'm currently employed by Lake Sumter State College, and my position there is the Director of Business Incubator Programs and Business Opportunity Centers. So I work throughout the county with small businesses and startup businesses, giving them the tools and resources to be successful in their business. So my job is economic development-based, but I also have retained personal counsel because I do know that sometimes, like Sumter State College and sometimes like county schools, they have an issue that overlap. If that were to be the case, I would recuse myself from any decision or voting that might cause any conflict of interest. I'm well aware of that, as my husband is a city commissioner in Eustis, and I was the chamber director, and every once in a while, those things overlapped a little bit. So if that would be the case, I would recuse myself, but I don't believe in economic development that is going to be much of an issue with an overlap. I would continue to work at Lake Sumter State College because I believe that education is economic development, and both of those jobs could help each other.
I've been a real estate broker for 30 years, so I wouldn't have any conflict with the school board. When I first got elected in Yumitilla, they told me that was a part-time job. There's no elected position that's a part-time job. In Yumitilla, I try to make it every event that's happening in Yumitilla, and it would be the exact same on the school board. It would be a full-time position for me, and I would dedicate myself fully to that. I have the word "RIDE" in my campaign literature now. Between the D and the E, there's a four. It stands for Republicans, Independents, Democrats for Education. I can't think of ever when any of us have asked one of our school teachers if they're a Democrat or a Republican. I do not have any political allegiance for any political group that's backing me, and I do not have any PAC money in that way. I would take PAC money. However, I can promise you, it would not influence my decision-making on the board. Thank you.
My service the last two years, and if I'm re-elected in the next four years, and then that will be it for me. I think that that's time enough for one to give back to their community. It's something I'm passionate about. I have a really, really full-time job, and if you ask my wife, this one is almost like a full-time job. But it isn't about the money for me, I've done it every dime back to charity, so I've not taken, I've taken the salary that flows right back through, and that can, that can be verified. flows right back through, and that can, that can be verified. I think this is about community service, and it's about my commitment to giving back, so I don't owe any of this. I will tell you this, I have relied on the unions to give me good information. I've met with the SEIE, I've met with the Federation of Teachers, and that's where the boots and the ground are, and they will tell you where there are efficiencies, and they're loyal and dedicated employees. I have absolutely no problem with being an advocate for them, as they are an advocate for all our children.
Well, as a current kindergarten teacher, I'm employed by the Lake County School District. If elected, and how I support the children would change. Naturally, I would not be able to consider or continue in the classroom, but that doesn't mean my work for the children stops, because that's where my ties are. It's to those children, and making sure that they have what they need in order to succeed in school. In terms of making it full-time, that's my dedication. You know, just because you take a teacher out of the classroom, that doesn't mean you take a educator out of the teacher. In order to be fully aware of what's going on in the schools, I understand that I need to be supportive of other departments aside from just teachers. I need to be out there, meeting with those people, shadowing them, and understanding the challenges that they face, so that way we can work together as a team to solve them, because it's not just the classroom that impacts a student's learning.
Okay, now we're going to start with a colleague. What is the root cause of the controversies such as class size reporting, establishment of no score below 50, transfers of school principals, and lawsuits? For example, school clubs such as the Gay Straight Alliance.
Much of that has to do with leadership, the other part is poor policy. You know, our club policy, when it came back to us, part of the reason that took so long is our club policy was absolutely 100% out of line with what the, what the Constitution said, and we had to work through that. It was a period of time that we had to work through that, and it was very messy, and we did it in public, and it was ugly, and I'll admit that. But those are things that, you know, we've got policy manuals that are this thick, we can't go through every policy every year, and, and so we go through these policies about every third year. And this policy was a very outdated policy that nobody had caught, and so that one was one. Class size, we dropped the ball, and that was, I disagreed with it. I mean, I just can't go any further than that. In, in my world, from the medical side, you produce a paper that is false, you lose your license. I'm not okay with that, and so, you know, a lot of this was on us as a district, but not necessarily on the school board.
I agree that if you're looking for one root cause, it would be leadership, but it's leadership at different levels. We have a, we have some really, really strong leaders in some of our schools, and we have weaker leaders in some of our schools. We have strong leaders in our district, and we have weak leaders in our district, and the accountability piece has been something that Lake County Schools has been lacking lately, and we need to strengthen that. I think it comes to having a board that, that can stand up and make those hard decisions and have those tough conversations, but the one root cause would be the leadership component.
I agree, the leadership component is a big part of it, but I definitely unclear policies and procedures that are either left open for loose interpretation, not communicated well and not trained well. So policies and procedures lead to a lot of poor choices and poor decisions all the way up and down the line. But I believe accountability is a huge issue for the school board at this point in time. And I know that we only have three employees that really report to the school board, but I think as soon as you establish a culture of accountability, people know that you mean business, and they will learn the policies, they will implement the policies and follow those procedures. But we have to make sure that people know that we are going to hold them accountable, and if not, then they won't have a job with us anymore. But accountability, clear policies and procedures that are communicated clearly and that we follow through and we're consistent with.
I was very disappointed to see what happened with the counting of students. Now we've hired more people to count students. This is what teachers do every day, they take attendance. So I'm not sure why we were going to hire a $100,000 master's degree person to count students. I'm just not quite sure of that. So accountability is a big thing, and that starts at the top. As far as teachers and principals being shifted from school to school, I was saddened to hear about Mrs. Hunt down in, in South Lake. She has a couple of years until she retires, the community loved her, she loved the school, she should have been allowed to stay at that school, in my opinion. Teachers get moved every couple of years. Sometimes they should be moved, sometimes they should be kicked out, but you've got to be able to stand up and say, "This is what's going on, and it all starts at the top and filters down."
Root causes, management or lack thereof? Class size amendment was violated because the state had a mandate or a statute that was given to the superintendent of the schools. The board approved it, they had to, they did not fund it. We did not have the money to be in compliance. If they didn't know that, shame on them. They should have. Clubs, there should be one policy for clubs. You can have a club, I'm going to go somewhere probably I shouldn't even go, but I'm so old, I can't even understand why a middle school child knows their sexuality, no more than once a gay and lesbian club. But having had said that, they're entitled to it, they have a right to have it, so they're good with it. Let me say this, too, real fast. I admire Mr. Mathias for what he does with his money. I'm here to tell you that if I get elected, I'm not going to give you back a penny, and you're going to think I'm underpaid. Thank you.
I don't know if you can do this in a minute, but I'm going to give it my best shot. I'm going to focus on what I believe is the biggest issue with everything you spoke about, and that is that we have this site-based management. We have administrators that are 11, excuse me, they're now 15th highest in the state paid out of 67 counties. You have teachers at 50th, and you have our service workers at 65th in the state. If you're paying somebody $100,000, and back in the day when I was in school, the school was the center of the community, and that's where everyone met, and that school principal was the leader, and that's what site-based is supposed to be. It is super annoying to me to read in the newspaper that we're being sued because there has been a mistake by, by an administrator that didn't understand the policy and didn't come to the board to request, to request that we, we define it for them. It's site-based, that's, that's our biggest issue.
Well, I would wholeheartedly agree that there is a leadership problem, but let me drill down one step further and explain what that problem is. It's accessibility and approachability. There is a huge disconnect that exists between the employees, teachers, and those that lead them. Back in the class size debacle, you know, I know of teachers who were afraid to come forward, that they're on an annual contract and have no guarantee of a job next year, they were afraid, so they did what they were told. There was one teacher who told me that she was afraid she was going to lose her pension, and she was on the verge of retirement. There should not be that kind of fear. You should be able to come forward to a leader who is approachable, available, and accessible. It all boils down to that.
I understand about the class size amendment, it was voted on by the voters of Florida. If they wanted the children to have smaller class sizes, experts, and teachers, unions, they all agreed that would be better for the students, and they were in violation, Lake County was in violation. And I have a question, if you have more than a certain amount of children in a room, who paid for the desks to go in the classroom? Were the children sitting on the floor? If you had more than 25, where are these children sitting? That's one question that came up. And then the other, she was, after the debacle, as Mr. Halt said, they did a survey of the schools to find out who was in violation and who asked them to violate or who, who asked them to forge their paperwork. And when they did the survey, they didn't ask for anybody's name. They didn't ask to track which schools this came out of, which, you know, schools reported this, and I thought that was a little strange. You want accountability, you want to be able to go, "I'm going to this principal, I'm going to that principal." And they did give them that option to include their name as part of the survey, so they could track down and get to the bottom of it.
Okay, we're going to go with another audience question. And this is going to start with Stephanie. Once the district releases its curriculum for the school year, parents and citizens have a mere 30 days to review and contest any material they find to be inappropriate. If something slipped through the cracks that you deemed to be inappropriate, will you support eliminating it from the curriculum even though it has passed that 30-day window?
Definitely. I'm, just off, off of the cuff, I know that as a teacher, we don't get very long to look at the curriculum maps as well either, so when you're trying to develop lesson plans and meet the needs of your students and meet the letter of the standards and prepare them for an assessment, you could definitely overlook things in a matter of 30 days, or two weeks, or one week, which is the pre-planning that they get, that they're paid to get. I would, however, invite and, and almost make it certain that we talk to stakeholders and educators. We've kind of talked about that, I don't remember who it came from, but just having people at the table that are knowledgeable about the subject matter, having the teacher at the table, having the citizens, the concerned citizens and stakeholders there as well. So it'd be something that would need to be discussed before you decided that, but I would definitely be open to listening and, and making a decision based on what we find, because you can't go through a thousand-page text or curriculum and find everything that might be lacking.
I would go along with that and say that I would be very open to changing that. I would like to say that I think we should be proactive in trying to lobby to get more time. 30 days is hardly enough time to review anything, and there's a lot of curriculum to review. But I would be in favor and of looking at that, changing that, and also bringing people to the table, the student, not the student, but the teachers, principals, to help review that and give us input, because again, it takes everyone to come to the table and understand what's being offered or what's being taught, and to give constructive criticism to move forward. So I would be in favor of reviewing that and being proactive to get more time as we go forward, to be able to review those materials and make sure they're appropriate for our students.
Well, the curriculum to me is just like the budget, it's a living animal. It's something you have to move around, look at, if something's not working right, you have to change it. If there's a book or something that is inappropriate, it should be taken care of. It's like the lady said, if it's 1,000 pages, nobody can read that in 30 days. At least I could never read 1,000 pages in 30 days, I would be napping in between. But you have to be able to look at things, and if it's not appropriate, it should be taken out, out of the classroom.
I would advocate letting the parents know that there's a 30-day window there, and give them an opportunity, say yea or nay, or make any comments they have. And I would definitely support, after the 30 days, if we made a mistake, if there's something that we don't like, to pull it back.
Senate Bill 864 gives for that review time, and I met with Warren Fisher, who's here, and, and came back to the board, or the superintendent with concerns, and to the board. And the board is going to be posting all the books online, so if there's a special interest that you have, you'll be able to use our engage process. There will be a committee formed that will be vetting any concerns, but 100%, if you miss it, then we should be able to go back and obviously correct a mistake, because I've made one or two of those.
One of the things that I do at the moment, I'm told that a new curriculum blueprint is being released by the county, I instantly run and jump to that to see how my expectations are going to, to change as a teacher, and what sort of things I'm going to need to, to teach, and how I'm going to deliver it. That being said, as much as I pore over that document, it, it pales in comparison to the size of 1,000 pages. I mean, it's, it's only 15 pages per subject. There are things that I don't find until the moment that you go to deliver them and teach them, and you say, "Oh my goodness, wait, this isn't right, we need to fix this." It's important to make the right choice regardless of when that happens. There are certainly some significant mistakes that need to be fixed, and regardless of whether that comes within a prescribed time period, it is right to make the, the fix of the mistake when you notice it.
I understand Ellen Hayes did push the legislation so that the parents could have a parent textbook review committee, and I think it's a good idea. If parents want to get involved in their schools, I'm definitely not going to say no, come into the school. If you want to read a 1,000-page textbook, you can go right ahead, or you can do it with a group of parents, each take a chunk, you know, like a book club, and everybody read a textbook on world history, and it'll probably take you half a year, but if that's what the parents want to do, I'm in support of it, so I think it's a good idea.
I would absolutely support it. You know, this came up with Rick Sarmiento and one of our history books, and I immediately pulled in our superintendent, Susan Moxley, Dr. Christensen, two specialists in there, as well as our friend Vance Yocum and a few others, and we were able to address it. The problem is that the alternatives may not be any better, and that's just the honest truth. We do need to review it. If we do find problems, we're going to have to work with the textbook writers to get this changed. This isn't a small process. So do I support it 100%? Is it going to be that magic pill? It won't, but we will have to work together and we'll have to, to agree to work through those processes. So it's going to be a big operation to get through it, and there's going to be a ton of books that we have to go through. So as we go into that, be patient, but we do agree with it.
Okay, Nancy. The current superintendent's contract has come to no for renewal. What criteria would you use to form a decision to renew it or not?
It's almost as bad as getting Common Core is the first question, the first person. I'm very much into accountability and leadership, and I, as a owner of a business or a manager of a department, I believe that you, in the end, are fully responsible for what happens underneath you. You have to build staff that will support you, you have to make sure that you have a team that has all the different skills that you don't have to be able to support you in your job. If you're not able to build a team and hold people accountable, then you yourself and your job is at risk. So I believe that if we, if we are looking at our current superintendent and we do not feel that the staff is supplying her the proper information, she is not executing the direction from the board, and if she's not a leader that we are looking for, we have to look for a new superintendent. I believe that it would be imperative to bring someone from the outside in, to take a look at our culture, to not have any allegiances to anyone else, to be able to start fresh with new ideas and be creative, so there's a lot more to say about that.
I had the opportunity to work with Dr. Moxley as the principal of Umatilla High School, and her husband, David, I like them both as, as people. Unfortunately, I think over her term, things have not gotten as good as they should be. Unfortunately, I would probably be on the side of having a new superintendent come to lead our school into the future.
I was disappointed with our superintendent when it became obvious to everybody that we were not in compliance with the classroom size amendment. If she did not know, she should have known. And I personally, I personally have information that leads me to believe that she did know. A lot of people know, knew. The survey said, 135 teachers said they were forced to sign something or were aware of it. There was a lot of people aware of it. I have even been told hearsay that there was direct communications from Taveries into a principal's office talking about how to adjust the figures. Now, if she's not doing the job, we need somebody else, and we need not be allocating $35,000 for a search. If somebody has to be paid $35,000, let the employee that takes the job pay the head on it.
The person that holds my seat will have a tremendous responsibility, because they'll be responsible in the member to decide whether or not to begin a search, because the superintendent's contract is up in chair. If I am the one sitting in the chair, I will be looking at the data and our performances. And, and my last year, my evaluation of the superintendent, I was very clear that I was not happy with her staff accountability. In that time, she's replaced the transportation director, she replaced our curriculum director, she just demoted our chief operating officer, and she's searching for chief of administration. Those key hires and how effective they are will depend on how I vote on them.
I think two of the most important pieces of the criteria that we need to be asking ourselves are, have we set the expectations clear, and have we held the superintendent accountable? You know, in response to the vote to potentially begin a superintendent search, I immediately went back and looked at her past performance appraisals and evaluations written by the members of the school board. And when I read those, I was surprised that they said that they were so disappointed with her performance because... with her performance because those performance evaluations available in board docs don't reflect that disappointment. So it's hard then to reach somebody's, you know, if I'm thinking about a business and there's annual evaluation that typically employees get, it's hard to all of a sudden to find that as a surprise that your employer is disappointed with your work. We don't have the results we want. We need to start getting those results. I think it's absolutely appropriate for the new board to determine the direction for the superintendent's search.
And I think of criteria for keeping a superintendent or deciding to get a new one. I think of what was the criteria when she was hired? What did she promise to do? What was her, what did she promise to bring to Lake County school system? And I wasn't familiar with the school board at that time in 2007 when she was hired. And so I'd like to know if she promised to do something and she didn't do it, that's something I would hold a criteria to her now. Is it time for your employment to come up for review? Have you fulfilled your duties? Have you fulfilled your promises? And I know the promise the Lake County voters were really looking forward to was us keeping our A rating as a school district. And we didn't keep it. We had it under Anna Cowan and under this superintendent, we lost it. Now it's a C. So I would ask her that question. You know, you had innovative ideas years ago when you were hired and you haven't fulfilled them, well, what do you plan to do about that if you want to keep your job?
The fact of the matter is I've ratcheted down on Susan Moxley year after year. The first year, she told me what I wanted to hear. It gave her pretty good marks. The second year, she went down on a scale from one to five, especially in human resource management, as well as the, as well as her leadership team, ratcheted down to a three. Last year, I ratcheted down to a two, needs improvement. For somebody to say that we haven't been critical, I've been very critical and I've been very straightforward, both through her face and in public. This was all in the press, it hasn't been hidden. She has a fantastic skill set on the education side. Make no bones about it, there are companies that will snatch her up as soon as she leaves this district. This is a major decision. She has a fantastic skill set. I very much disagree with her human resource management as well as the team that she has in her leadership. Although I agree with Bill, she is making change. It may be too little, too late.
I agree also with what Dr. Howard said, that our current superintendent is very, 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 very good at the academic side of things, that she has an excellent understanding of curriculum and instruction, those types of things. But her ability to hire or recruit and retain or even release employers has been evident that it's not been the best judgment in the world. And our schools have suffered because of that. I also agree that our district went from an A rating to a C rating underneath her direction. And as many things that she's done is good at, she's also harmed us in that regard. So I do think that given the chance in November to review that, those things would be taken into consideration to make it the consideration of searching or not.
Okay. Well, this sort of led right into the next question. I'll start with Peter. What are the major obstacles stopping the district from achieving an A rating? And how can these obstacles be addressed?
I think some of the obstacles that are in the way are allowing the teachers to teach. I think, you know, they get graded, they get graded on what their students do. So if you're not getting the students to perform to the best of their abilities, then your grade is going to be bad and the whole system is going to be great to bad. I think if we allow our teachers to get back into the mode of being a one-on-one and a two-to-one, three-to-one teacher who can talk to kids, start the ones that need help, get them the help that they need to progress, get their reading skills up, get their writing skills up. It's amazing to me what I've seen over the last thirty years that I've been in the school system. Kids don't know how to write anymore. Kids are lacking in reading. We need to bring those skills up in order to bring the grades up for teachers and the whole system in itself.
This report card from the state says we're not only a C school, we have four F schools. Dr. Moxley, two weeks ago on the school board, said, let me be clear, we don't have any F schools in this district. Yes, we do. Proof of the pudding is in the tasting. We're going backwards. We can do much better than this. We have to allow the teachers to teach to the students. When you, the other thing that's really important is the value-added modeling. We can't be paying our teachers promotional money for their performance when that encourages cheating, improprieties, and again, teaching to the test and not to the students. We need to pay them a base pay, what they're worth, and evaluate them accordingly.
I'm going to go with the last half poll for a second, and I wish I had my charts. We are sixty-fifth in funding out of sixty-seven counties. When you do the calculation based on our scores, we are twenty-fourth in outcome. We're next in the highest C district. Even though we just received a C, the fact is we're up twelve points academically across the county. We had three F scores and one F charter. That's what we had. And now I'm going to tell you a story. The two of the Fs are Leesburg Elementary, Leesburg Middle, and the charter school, Humambian Arts. I had a call from the mayor of Leesburg. He was concerned. We have an education summit now scheduled. This is going to be a chance for the community to come together because the school district cannot do this by themselves. We've got to engage the community and parents if we're going to be an A school district again.
I'd say one of the biggest obstacles we face is that we're spending the money in all the wrong places. You know, if I look at five hundred thousand dollars that was spent on a computer program that would help us produce fancy reports that would make us make better decisions, it doesn't work. Teachers would rather have that five hundred thousand dollars elsewhere in the classroom. You think about how many teachers' aides that could provide, especially in some of our lowest performing schools. When I have my own kids in my classroom underperforming, I give them more attention. Unfortunately, there are too many things that take me away from giving them more attention. Too much mandated testing, fourteen weeks of it. Teachers' aides spread too thin. When I first started, I had about an hour a week with my teachers' aide. Now I get forty-five minutes a week and only half of that is with students. I need that time to be able to spend with students on a one-on-one or a small group setting where I can target their specific weaknesses. We need to do the same principle as it applies to our district. We need to give those schools attention that they need, find out what their needs are, and make sure we fulfill those.
I believe the question was how we can turn around our C district? I believe we have to focus on the community. They're the ones that, you know, raise the children. They're the ones that send them to school. If they're hungry, they're the ones that send them to school. They've never read a book before they get into kindergarten. It makes it harder for the teachers once the children are there. So I believe the community of learning has to start in infancy. I believe when the parents are pregnant, the mother's pregnant, they have to be healthy. They have to, I'm part of an organization that tries to encourage them to take care of themselves, prenatal care, read to your child, play music, and once they're born, definitely encourage reading, sensory and all the different things that children need, early childhood education. And the other thing we need to do, which I don't think Lake County's done, I know everyone travels and they go to conferences in Washington and conferences here and different things. Have you asked an A school district what they do right? I have. And I have ideas that I would love to share with Lake County if you'll let me. Thank you.
One of the biggest obstacles we're facing right now is the destruction of the school leadership teams. We have assistant principals who get moved all around. And I've had principals come to me and say, I don't have a single person who was here three years ago in their leadership team. You know, as a business owner, if I'm staffing, I'm going to staff for my weakness. I know what my weakness is. I can introspectively look and say, you know what? I hate billing. I need a billing person. And so that's what we do. In order to fix this, we're going to need to help our teachers. Remember that eighty million dollars I talked about that we cut out of the budget? Well, it's not there. We don't have it and we don't have a magic beanstalk that's going to give us that money. What we need to do is go into the community and wrap around. We need to get our city, our faith-based, our chambers and the county to all step in, to grab these communities, to raise them up. We need to invest in targeted early childhood development to get these students ready to go into school. There's many things that we need to do, but it starts at the community and that's where we need to invest our time and money.
I am wholeheartedly, I'm not going to sit by Dr. Howard anymore because sometimes answers are exactly what I was planning to say. I one hundred percent agree that it's leadership. I kind of go through my head how we're going to answer these questions and everything that I can attribute can all be taken back to leadership. So I know Ms. Hahn just said that, have we looked at A school districts? Have we looked at A schools? So I was at a breakfast this morning that Mrs. Hunt put on at Eustace Heights Elementary School, which is one of our schools that we're talking about here today. And she had councilmen there, she had the chamber there, she had churches there, she had volunteers there. And she said, we need you. This is my goal. This is where we are, this is where I need to get. They were great goals, they were big goals. But they recognized the students' needs at her school. And then she had the community members that were raising their hands. What can we do? This is what you can do, this is what you can do, this is what you can do, this. We need leaders in our buildings that will allocate resources right, that will reach out to the community, that will put strong teachers in those classrooms where they know they need it. And it all builds on what we can put in leadership positions in our schools.
While I'm last this time, pretty much everything's been said. But you might have remembered that when I first started, one of the things I think is very important is to facilitate the partnerships between our business community and our education community because funding will always be an issue. Funding will always be an issue in our schools. And I think if we can get our businesses to buy into what we're doing in school and be committed to being partners, our business partners, to being our mentors, they actually might have some finances to bring books and uniforms and different things that we need in our classroom. But we have to facilitate partnerships. We have to bring the community in. Yes, we need to help our families and yes, there's a social fabric that needs our attention. Well, we can only do so much. But if we can bring our business community together, our education community together, and build a team to address these things together, then we can move things forward. That's what I would do.
Thank you. Okay, time for an audience question. And we'll start with John. Why do you feel children are not being identified, special needs is what it says, in elementary and being pushed through with no help?
I think they are being identified and I think they are being helped. As a matter of fact, I think we label too many children too fast. As a matter of fact, in the real world out there, if a teacher has a child that's incorrigible or has a problem with, that child might get labeled too fast. One thing we do right in this school system, I've been in classrooms where children have severe learning disabilities. I've seen three teachers for nine students. And I've seen teachers with pads on their arms because they get kicked and they get bitten. We do a lot for those children and we should continue to do a lot for them. And I favor anything, they have enough challenges in life, and anything that we can do for them.
When Dr. Christensen came on board, the very first thing he presented to us was an analysis of our BPK to third grade. That's really the foundation. And if children aren't strong there, it's going to just get progressively harder for them. You would not build a house on a cracked foundation. And we can't do it with a foundation that doesn't start with the BPK. And they showed a very distinct difference between kindergarten and kindergarten and advancements and getting up to their skill sets. Dr. Christensen is going to be initiating what is called articulation where there's going to be, there's going to be straight follow-through from BPK by staff at the district level all the way to the high school. So they are responding, they are, we are driving it and we'll see the benefits in the future.
You know, as a kindergarten teacher, certainly I applaud the efforts to focus on BPK and the students in the primary grades. One of the first workshops I attended when I was first stepping into the kindergarten role was that I was told if students are ahead academically when they leave my classroom in kindergarten, statistically, they will stay ahead for the rest of their academic lives. So there is so much pressure to imagine getting these students ahead in those primary grades. We don't want them to be behind, otherwise they certainly fall further and further that way. Now specifically as it relates to students with special needs, there are places where the process is remarkably slow. I am aware of a situation, for instance, a student with a speech disability. Despite referrals and references, it took more than a year for that student to be evaluated. At the very least, we need to push that process and give the opportunity for evaluation and reserve judgment for those evaluations, but they should happen timely at the very least.
Since I'm not in the schools currently, I can't really speak to the special needs children that the parents feel are not getting the attention. But I do know I'm concerned about over-medicating the children. If the boys will be boys and they're overactive and they're hyper, that's not something you need to medicate. It's something you need to give the child more time to reassess. He needs to get his aggression out. It's very hard, boys and girls learn differently and I think that's something the teachers too need to identify. If the children are acting up, it might just be because they didn't get enough sleep or they're aggressive because, you know, they had a bad day at home or something happened, they had a fight with their sister or somebody took their backpack and threw it out the window on the school bus. That happens a lot and that makes children irrational and act out in class. So I, like I said, I don't know that personally in stories about behavioral disabilities with children in schools, but we're willing to listen to the parents.
From our FTE funding, we know that we are missing identifying these students at an early time. How do we stop that? We need to rely on our teachers. You know, my mom taught for thirty years and it's one thing that, you know, I always enjoyed it, we'd go back to talk to her because the teacher can tell you within a week, in many cases within a day, this child has issues, we need to do this testing. For whatever reason, and I can't answer it, and I have asked for us to go through the process to find out where the problem is. But for whatever, for whatever reason, these teachers identify the problem and it takes years in some cases to get the students the help that they need. It's not acceptable. We do have one young lady who had to go to a neuropsychologist to get the diagnosis. She came back to the schools and the school said, well, we need to do our own testing. For some reason, we can't trust that person who has sixteen years of education. It's following.
And the bureaucratic process named for that paperwork that we're talking to is the Response to Intervention or the Multi-Tierred System of Student Support. And it is a very, very lengthy, convoluted paperwork process that teachers have to go to once a student has been identified, which is the reason why students are not being identified early on. So if I have a student in my class that is, no, I'm just kidding, that is falling behind, I have to actually document what I have done to help him and then present that, that he's not being successful in what I've done to help him. And then we decide as a team, or sometimes not, how I'm going to help him. So I come back and try again and document that success or failure. And this happens multiple times before we can advise them to go into the next step, which is just here too, where they do it again and the data has to show. So again, they could start something in September of one year and not see results from it for a year later. And it is, it is a, it is a crime that we're doing that to the students and to the teachers as well.
I do believe that it's important to identify these students early. As a reading specialist in my early career days, we were taught to identify students that had dyslexia or other processing problems in reading and that type of thing. But I also think it's important to not over-diagnose and not do it too quickly. And if we have students that are not performing at level, do not pass them on to the next grade because I think sometimes we compound that problem for the student. We set them up for failure if we pass them to second grade and they're not reading at first grade level. And we compound the problem for the teacher when she's now teaching students that are above level, at level, and below level. To identify students that truly have problems, a teacher needs to have time. You need to identify what the problem is and what extra help they need. So I think there's a couple of different ways to look at this, but early identification is important. Like holding students back that are not ready to progress is also another important tool in this.
As they said, it is a process, a time-consuming process. There's a lot of paperwork involved. Another problem is, is that when you have students who are slow learners, their grade still counts towards that teacher's grade and the school's grade. And so they make them move faster than they need to move. We need to change that process. We need to give those kids more time to learn if they need it. And that's the only way to make this thing happen.
Okay, I think we'll get in maybe a couple more questions. And we'll start with Bill. I'll go ahead and jump to another audience question. Lake County has received over one point three million dollars from the Gates Foundation, most recently five hundred thousand dollars for personalized learning. What will you do as a steward for our children's and teachers' privacy to ensure that the only information collected will be that directly involved in their education and that the entire data collection process is transparent and that their personal information will not be given to third-party vendors?
We have a policy against that. And if you ever go in, you will see that the student's identity and what data we're gathering is, it fits the culture, it fits the specific criteria that we're trying to assess. As far as the Gates Foundation and $1 million of it happened to be the Engage LCS, which we were one of four counties in the entire United States that received that grant. And it was to take a school district and look at itself like it's a business. That's actually the reason I'm running, is because the culture is changing and we are spending money wisely. We are properly vetting now. We're not running off on a wild track because a computer program looked good, we wanted to buy it, or this or that. So now there is an entire process, and we are viewing it as a business. The personalized learning grant we just got, which addresses, to some of your concerns, the students that can't keep up, that, we were one of only six school districts in the whole country, and only two have learned.
Well, certainly there are processes and policies in place to protect student privacy, and naturally, we need to hold those very sacred as we consider students' learning and making sure that their results do remain that private. As I speak, you know, this question certainly opens up the opportunity for the Engage LCS grant, in which case, you know, I was particularly excited at first when I heard about this opportunity, because I thought, great, there are going to be so many efficiencies identified, and it's going to make my life in the classroom a lot easier. You know, what I've been disappointed about, though, is why the district didn't think beforehand to go out and try and collaborate ahead of that, because the district had to show out, you know, more than $300,000 of its own money to participate in this grant. In my previous experience with the Walt Disney Company, we had, you know, a lot of unique rides that only exist in a few places in the world. A Buzz Lightyear, for example, if a guest had a problem with articles falling out of the ride, what we did is we called up other Buzz Lightyears around the world and said, "What do you do?", before we'd go hire engineers to figure it out for us. So, thank you.
Since I'm not currently on the school board or in the school district, all I can really speak about is the privacy of the children. It is paramount, it's very important to protect the children. The parents trust us with their children for six hours a day, and we should make sure that no strangers or any outside parties have that information to send their children, you know, solicitations or try to sign them up for Disney Cruises or anything. Parents don't want the kids to get to know about.
Earlier, you heard about a $500,000 program that we had to pull reports. It's not exactly what it is. It's a data warehouse where we keep all of our data in-house. Part of what you're talking about is a data warehouse that was done in a state, and that allowed for companies to pull that information. Ours is kept here in Lake County, where it should be. Did we spend the money? We sure did. Texts the students. We also have policies. I can't even see a student's information. I can see a number, but I can't see any more than that. I can't see their grade. I can't see anything. We have good protections in place. Do we need to make sure they're there? Absolutely. I'm 100% on board. As in the medical world, nothing comes out of my office unless there is a signed waiver with it and the parent knows where it's going. And I agree with that. Our parents need to know exactly where that information's going, exactly what it's being used for, and I would support that 100%, but that takes a good policy.
I would also support that 100% as a parent. I would definitely want to know where my student's information was going, and I think that part of that will be the responsibility of really looking into the legislation and what it looks like and where it's saying that this information is going and what they're planning on doing with it. And it should be a concern, only in the fact that with the value-added model and tracking students from kindergarten through 12th grade, in order to evaluate teachers, there are going to be records that are going to be trapped. So I'm 100% for the protection of the student, and we need to be very, very educated on what that looks like at the state level and what we can do at the district level as well.
I'm also in favor of protecting our students' privacy rights. Mr. Mathias and Dr. Howard said that we have a policy in place to protect them. I think at this point, it's important for us to make sure that that policy is followed and that we hold people accountable that do not follow those policies like everything else. So if we have a policy in place, we make sure that everyone is trained to follow that policy, and then we proceed from there. But I believe in the privacy of the information on our students.
It's not last, and it is all about policy and privacy. So you make sure it's up to date, you make sure that everybody understands it, and there are no mistakes. We saw mistakes with NSA, right? So we've got to make sure there are no mistakes with the privacy policy in the county.
I think we do an excellent job in protecting the confidentiality and the integrity of our student data. And there, we get an A. So we're doing a great job, and we have to continue to do that. Thank you.
Okay, this will be our last question, because everybody's getting tired or restless. And I want to let the candidates have some time to talk with you afterwards if you have any one-on-one questions you'd like to ask. We're going to start with Mark. And the question is, if you could ask any of the other candidates a question, who would it be and what would you ask them?
Finally.
Well, I was posed this question one other time, and I thought that it was a valuable answer. I posed the question to Dr. Howard once before, and I'd ask it again, and that is, what specific experience do you bring to the table, firsthand classroom knowledge, to be able to make the decisions that would best impact our schools in a positive way?
He asked specifically to me.
Oh, we have to answer.
Yes.
Can I get a minute to answer?
I'll show you my classroom experience. You spoke out of turn. I'm not a teacher, I don't claim to be. What we do as board members, we deal with a $600 million budget, we make policy. Do I reach out to educators? Do I reach out to the unions? Do I reach out to the goods on the ground? Absolutely. Very little of what we do is in the classroom. Teachers need to teach. I have no reason to make, I'm not going to oversee that. I'm not going to go in a classroom and tell a teacher how to teach. That's what they do. That's what they're educated to do, and that is the best place for them. We need fantastic teachers in our schools, and never, ever would I step on their toes like that. You know, that is one that I'm very passionate about, that I don't micromanage, and I don't ask teachers to do things they shouldn't do. So classroom experience, none. Board experience, more than my opponent, four years on a $600 million budget, 15 years as a small business owner. I've made payrolls, I've done the deeds, and I have the experience. Thank you.
Stephanie? I mean, Jamie, excuse me. I'm getting tired, aren't we? I'm getting tired.
We're really tired. This is the last question.
Yeah, last question.
Hey, I'll ask some.
I was at the same forum, Mr. Dodd, and we both asked the same question. And I think it's important we ask the incumbent the question because he wants to be re-elected. Mr. Howard, I've seen a lot of your charities and organizations you're affiliated with. Could you name me one charity that you donated to, your time, and most recent event that you attended?
Long story or short story? Short. Short story. Short story is, we are an ambassador family from March of Dimes. If anybody ever has never seen it, go to Hope for the Howards, and we have a very compelling story of our child who was born 19 months ago. And so it's kind of an emotional story. It's a good story, but March of Dimes, it's a great foundation.
Okay, now, Stephanie.
He didn't talk to you so much.
Todd, if you could ask any of the other candidates a question, who would it be and what would you ask?
A little while ago, I was unfair to Stephanie because I stepped on her toes about what she used to do with Race to the Top. But she has some great information on it, and I think she deserves, I mean, we've been able to work with her, just to explain, we worked with her as a district level, and so I kind of pushed her out in front of the bus at what she did. But I do think she gets to, and she did a great job with Race to the Top, but I think she should have an opportunity to explain, because I did kind of hit her with the buzz a little bit. Let me talk about Race to the Top earlier. If you don't want to explain, you don't have to.
I have a minute, and I was supposed to be using that minute to think about what question I was going to ask, because I don't know yet. But, Race to the Top. I was hired as the project manager for the teacher and leader evaluations for Race to the Top. So I definitely wasn't hired to implement the teacher and leader evaluations, not the advocate or the founder of the new teacher and leader evaluation. So I actually believe that that year that I did that position before I left to go to the University of Central Florida was one that very much set me up for success in a position such as this, because it was a very controversial topic. It was highly regarded as negative, and to be able to try to train administrators and to train teachers to understand where the value of this is and what we can do as a district to be successful in it, really helps me know how to handle situations that will arise on a board that you have to handle gently, and you have to come out of establishing strong relationships with community, with teachers, staff, and district personnel. And now it is my turn to ask a question. And I don't have a question to ask. No, I'm like racking my brain. I think it's fantastic that you asked that question, and it's the first one that I'm like stumped. It reminds me of Family Feud audition. Anyway, if I had to ask a question, I would ask Ms. Lunsme to just describe to me what your experience in education was, because I know you have a background in education, but I'm not sure what you did.
Okay. I'm a reading specialist, and I actually taught reading at Oak Hill Elementary in Orange County. I had first graders that were advanced readers, and then I had slow readers, second through sixth grade, in which we actually had to write some books for our sixth-grade students because Dick and Jane and Spot were not the books they wanted to read. So I had some experience actually writing some books for our students to read, identifying those students that had dyslexia and learning problems. We had to be very creative with some of our students, and so to get them to read, we did some plays, and we did different things like Stone Soup and a few other things. But most currently, I'm involved in education, and I've been teaching job readiness to our seniors in high school, so they know how to put their best foot forward, that they learn how to write resumes, they learn how to interview, and learn how to dress properly. Because once they get out of high school, they come out into the field where I'm working in economic development. I try to find them jobs, and I try to keep our businesses going with a skilled workforce. So education comes all the way through grade school to high school to Lake Tech to Lake Suter. So education throughout the whole process.
And now while you're standing there, I'll ask you a question.
Okay. I'd like to ask Mr. Mathias to give us some advice as new school board members. What are the things you think that we should prepare for? What do you think would be some good processes or procedures for us to be the most prepared and things for us to look forward to as new school board members?
I'd buy some Vaseline. The reality is, it is like, I have seen, I've actually seen most of you at the board meetings. Y'all are engaged, and you are in the process now. When I first was elected, mine was only a two-year term, so I had to hit the ground running. So I did all of the background and the homework, so that I would understand policy. You have to understand how complex it is when you're dealing with other government agencies, and who the authority is on an issue, and how to cross over to the state. And our board has been effective at that. So that's what I'd say, homework, 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 and then hit the ground, and then be true to yourself. That's the key.
Okay, Peter?
Just, I'd like to ask Mr. Howard how he feels about the pressure of being an elected official, and being one myself, what the others who haven't had this opportunity feel from sitting in front of a crowd and having to make the hard decisions. And I know he's had to make a couple, because I've been to some of the meetings, and I have appreciated some of the comments that he has made. And I just want him to give his feeling, how he feels about being an elected official and the pressures that you can sometimes feel in that.
The pressures can be extreme. You get to sit on a board while people yell at you and tell you are the scum of the earth, and you smile and say, "Thank you, I appreciate that." And that is, and many times, you run as a public official, and there's things that are said that are absolutely false, and you smile and you say, "Thank you, I appreciate that." And that is what we as a board do, or board members, city commission. Many times, you know, we can't get personally involved, you have to have a thick skin. You know, and as I said earlier, when I signed up for this, I didn't know what I signed up for. Once I was in it, it becomes very apparent. I mean, it takes a special person to be effective as a board member, and, you know, it really is, it's nothing personal. You have to get in, and you have to appreciate those little bits and pieces that move the subject along, because if you think you're going to change it overnight, it doesn't. I'm in the business world. I'm used to doing it my way, and it doesn't happen that way.
Okay, John?
I think Dr. Howard does a good job, but I think if Mr. Dodd were to win the election, he would bring a lot to the school, being he has a background in early childhood development or as a kindergarten teacher. I want to ask him, if he gets elected, what would be your main proposal, or one thing that you would like to see changed in our elementary schools?
You know, all night, we've talked about how the school board really sets the direction for policy and budget, and so I really appreciate this question, because that's where the school board does have an opportunity to set the direction in elementary schools. And I mentioned earlier the study I heard about where students will typically stay ahead at the end of kindergarten. It's not an immediate, short-term solution for us, it's a long-term vision. We need to invest in those early childhood grades by providing the aides that the teachers need so they can give the one-on-one attention to the students. We need to pull back some of that county mandated testing and explain to the state why we don't need so much of it from them either. We need to create that time for the teacher to teach. We need to find out the resources they need in order to do their job most effectively. In some places, it's engaging technology, because that allows the chance for those students to be connected to the lessons. In some places, it's having the intervention teachers to be able to pull them out in small groups or push into the classrooms. Thank you.
Okay, now, Bill, would you agree that we save the best for last?
I would absolutely agree to save the best for last. And I'm going to, I mean, I'm going to ask Mr. Artisone one question, and he has a diverse background that he would bring to the board. But can you share with me, at one point in your literature, you have an $80 million a year company. Can you share with me what happened to that company?
I say in my literature, on my website, that I had a sales and marketing company that generated $80 million for the Timeshare developers. And that's exactly what it did. How do I know it's ever like that? My company generated 5,000 leads in a year, and one out of 10 people bought a Timeshare, and it was $10,000. The DPG was $1,000. We generated $5 million in sales that year. Our DPG was a lot higher than $1,000. In many years, we generated more than 5,000 units. And I did that from 1991 to 2008, and plus, we had true sales with attraction tickets and what have you, and over $5 million a year.
Okay, now, just so as you know, the flyer has got the candidates lined up by who's competing with who, but District 1 is John and Bill, District 3 is Mark, Jamie and Todd, and District 5 is Stephanie, Nancy, and Peter. So that's who's running against who there. Okay, I would like to thank our candidates for coming out tonight and participating with getting around the clock. I also want to thank the ladies of the I also want to thank the ladies of Republican